Will everyone take their seats, please? Welcome to the County Council meeting of Monday, August the fourteenth. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and as you can see, everyone is in attendance, so we do have a full council to conduct the business of county council. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation by Councilman York Glover?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, we come to you right now with Thanksgiving for how you continue to bless us, how you continue to bless this council, this community, the children that we serve, but especially, Lord, how you continue to bless our first responders who go out every day to help us, Lord, those that are in need, continue to protect them. Father, we ask that you will give us peace where there's war. We especially pray for those that are in Ukraine, that peace will come to that nation. We ask that you continue to look over us, this nation here, that we can all unite as one, that we can be the example of what it is like to live in heaven. Be with us and stand by us, and we'll continue to give you glory and honor and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would ask a member of council to amend tonight's agenda as follows. We conducted the committee meeting just before this, and one of the items that we wanted to put on this meeting failed to get on this meeting, and therefore, I'm going to ask a member of council to add item twelve A to recommend the approval of a resolution to name the Boundary Street Open Space Pocket Park located in the city of Beaufort to be called the First South Carolina Volunteers' Park.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll second that one.
Okay, it is duly motioned and seconded for adding that particular item to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the agenda will be amended for that purpose. Now I would ask a member of council to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Duly motioned by Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Dawson.
I'll second that.
Duly motioned and seconded for the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the amended agenda is approved. As we go through, when we get to item number nineteen, we will have a discussion about postponing that particular item, but we will do that when we get to that item. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of June twelfth, June twenty-sixth, July twenty-fourth, and July twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-three. May I have such a motion?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Tavernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next, we turn to our administrator's report. Mr. Robinson.
Chairman, council, thank you for having me. First, I'd like to thank you for trusting me as the interim administrator for the care of Beaufort County. I will lead with character and integrity. I'm thankful for the professional team of Beaufort County. They've worked very hard and been very helpful for this past month for me. We should all give them a quick round of applause. So with us tonight is another team member that I'd like to introduce. Looks like she brought a guest with her. Jen, Jen is one of our animal services officers.
Here, yes, she didn't know this was my pet.
Oh, good me. Who's this?
This is Socks.
Socks? All right. I have too many already. So Jennifer Holston, Jennifer has been with Beaufort County for eight years. She serves as an animal services officer. Jennifer forces humane care, regulation of animal laws to maintain public safety and assist with controlling populations. She also performs various tasks that include investigating animal cruelty, rescuing trapped animals, and capturing strays or dangerous animals. Something unique about Jen, Jen started as an office admin. She then began working as a kennel tech. She was an asset as a kennel tech because of her ability to work with feral canines. She then moved to animal control and community-centered field services. Jen works more to support people and pets through community outreach, supplies, food, and helping pet population and pet retention programs. To keep pets with their people is so important. Thanks so much for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
Do you want to say hello?
Yeah, I'm moving out.
It is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Ms. Marilyn Harris. Ms. Harris is the newly elected director of the Beaufort County Black Chamber of Commerce. She was appointed in July, July third of two thousand and twenty-three. She has more than thirty-five years of service leadership experience spanning the military, Beaufort County, government, and civil service. Ms. Harris is currently serving as a commissioner with the Beaufort County Housing Authority. She is a board member of the Coastal Community Foundation and a member of Women United, which is a committee of the United Way Low Country. She has also served on the, she's also served on boards of other local nonprofit organizations, including Second Helpings, SCORE, and the Boys and Girls Club of the Low Country. In addition to her board service, Ms. Harris has supported several Beaufort County assistance programs, such as COZY, the Collaboration Organization for Service to Youth. Ms. Harris is going to talk to you for just a few minutes and introduce some of her board members.
It's my honor and my pleasure to be here. It's an even greater honor to serve as the executive director of the Beaufort County Black Chamber of Commerce. I'll bet you didn't know that August is Black Business Month. Well, now you can't say you don't. It's my honor to recognize the Board of Directors, the new Board of Directors of the Beaufort County Black Chamber of Commerce. These are the individuals who decided that I would be their choice, and they're with me tonight. Would you just sort of stand and raise your hands? Thank you. And in addition to the members of the board, I've also brought along with me my team, most of whom are brand-new, and so I'd ask my team to stand. Thank you. So I'm proud to report to an excellent Board of Directors, and I'm grateful for the team that I've already begun to form to support this organization. So just give me a moment, I promise to just take a minute, to tell you a little bit about the Black Chamber. The Black Chamber is not a traditional Chamber of Commerce. The reason why it's not traditional is because in addition to all the things that you're, what you recognize as a Chamber of Commerce, we do other things. We target the African-American business community. And why do we do that? We do that because historically, they are the underserved community of emerging small businesses that don't traditionally get the support that other small businesses do, or historically have not. So we provide training, economic opportunity, all for the purpose of economic empowerment of emerging black businesses. In addition to that, we provide home loan training programs for first-time home buyers. We provide training and other services through our partnership with SCORE for these emerging businesses. And in addition to that, we provide microloans through the Small Business Administration, through USDA. We are able to support not just emerging small businesses, but we make people's dreams come true. We take care of, we provide loans for those first-time home buyers once they've taken the training. We provide emergency loans. We provide home repairs. We do a number of things that traditional black chambers don't do. We're so grateful to be a part of the Beaufort community, and I came by here to tell you that I look forward to partnering with you. I look forward to providing an even greater investment opportunity along with the rest of this community. Thank you for that one, Lord.
All right, so the last thing that I want to do tonight is to present four awards that Beaufort County has received from the South Carolina Association of Counties. As many of you know, many of you attended, that we, our South Carolina Association was two weeks ago. We attend those every year for annual training for staff and for council members. So first, this is, the first award is the two thousand and twenty-two J. Mitchell Graham Mr. Fralix was the principal behind the work on this award, so I'll read quickly what this is about. In two thousand and twenty-two, Beaufort County was the winner of the J. Mitchell Graham Memorial Award for implementation of a Colleton Central, a Collection Central Decal System and the Barrent Lurmore Memorial Regional Award for Southern Low Country Stormwater Design. At the two thousand and twenty-three SEAC Annual Conference held at the Isle of Palms, August first through the third, Beaufort County received the permanent cup for those awards. Thanks so much, Derek. The next two, the principal for the next two awards was Hank Amundson. I'll read them both. Beaufort County received the honorable mention for the J. Mitchell Graham Memorial Award for implementation of the Beaufort Memorial Hospital PATH Program. The PATH Program was designed to respond to a shortage of state healthcare workers by using ARPA funds to make Beaufort County's healthcare system more resilient. PATH offers onsite classes, clinical skills training, and tuition support to help clinical and non-clinical staff advance and succeed. As of April two thousand and twenty-three, one hundred five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars in scholarships have been granted to take onsite hospital courses for nursing students and enrolled in colleges and universities. The next award that Mr. Amundson has is the Beaufort County, this is honorable mention for the implementation of regional housing trust fund. Beaufort and Jasper Counties partnered with six local municipalities. Affordable housing for largely tourism-based workforce that has been priced out of the Heisman Market, we good? Near the place of employment. Affordable housing concerns cause workforce shortages, longer commute times, and childcare issues due to extended workdays. The Beaufort-Jasper County partnership has resulted in the first regional housing trust fund to be established in South Carolina with eight jurisdictions across two counties.
I feel guilty to hold these because so many people put time in, so to Beaufort Memorial Hospital, USCB, TCL, City of Beaufort, and others that played ball on the PATH Program. We look forward to making good reports in the next two years over all the good numbers that are coming out, and all those municipalities and people that are working on the housing trust fund, I think we're about to see some grapefruit coming from that as well.
Neil Desai is our Director of Public Works. This is the Cooperation Award in, for, the Barnwell County landfill caught fire May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. With support of staff assistance and equipment from Aiken, Barnwell, Beaufort, Dorchester, and Hampton Counties, as well as local municipalities and state agencies, the fire was fully extinguished after two days without injury. This effort exemplifies regional partnership. Each entity worked well with all team members, looking out for safety of others and following directions as given by the leaders, demonstrating an exemplary regional partnership. Thanks so much. Two more quick notable things. Beaufort County Detention Center recently had a de-hec inspection for their health, health inspection for their food prep area, for their kitchen. They received a one-hundred percent compliance, so this was, this was a good thing for the detention center. We've invested in the detention center and their kitchen facility, so this was a great thing. Also, in May or April, you, council, approved the purchase of an ambulance for a Beaufort County EMS. That ambulance was delivered last week and is being outfitted now and should be in service soon, so thank you very much for that effort. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Yes. One final thing before we do the proclamations. As Mr. Robinson said, this was a three-day event where staff and council members went for training, took classes, participated in sessions, so those individuals, both staff and council members who attended that, would you please stand? These are the people who spent three days at the Isle of Palms, making sure that we are going to be the most effective county we can be, so congratulations to each and every one of you. Now, it's my pleasure to have Mr. McKellen read a proclamation recognizing the Bluffton All-Star Softball Team on their state championship win.
I know. This is a big deal, by the way. You don't often get to see something like this taking place in Beaufort County. A state championship softball team for girls eight and under. Yep, a remarkable achievement. Is everybody here tonight? Is almost everybody here tonight? Almost? Okay, I'm going to read.
Bring him up.
What's that?
Bringing him up.
Yeah, I'm going to get to that. If Mr. Lawson would join me and Mr. Cunningham would join me, these two gentlemen are representatives elected from Bluffton, but I wasn't sure where the boundary lines were, so I'm going to give them each half a responsibility here to issue some certificates. I'm going to read a proclamation for the entire team, and then we have some additional proclamations for each of the star baseball, softball players who participated in this tournament. So, let me read the proclamation. Whereas in June of two thousand and twenty-three, the Bluffton All-Star Softball Team won the state championship in the girls' eight-and-under division, and whereas Beaufort County Council celebrates the team's victory at the state tournament and also their determination, enthusiasm, and team spirit, and whereas the team envisioned their own mission statement from the start of their All-Star season, hard work, teamwork, and dream work, and whereas the team is coached by head coach Zach Lineham and assistant coaches Lindsay Goodman, Patrick Mahoney, and Katherine Cooler, are they here tonight? They're all here? Okay, great, because we'd like you to come up in a few minutes so we can get some photos. Whereas the two oh two-three season is a great source of pride for the players, for the coaches, for the fans, for the family, and the community, and all of Beaufort County, and whereas the team entered the state championship as the runners-up for the Southern District of South Carolina, and whereas the team dominated the state tournament, winning each game they played and scoring a total of sixty-four runs while allowing only twenty-two runs against them. Sixty-four runs and allowing twenty-two. Whereas the members of the Beaufort County Council are extremely proud of this entire team and wishes now to acknowledge all twelve players. Would the coaches come up and join us in the front, please, if you want to? I'm not going to force you to do that. And then I'm going to call the girls by name, and then when I do, I'd like you to come up as well, okay? The first name is Lucy Mahoney. Is Lucy here tonight? Okay. The second name, I hate when that happens. The second name is Taylor Lineham. Is Taylor here? Come on up, Taylor. Come on, right over here. So let me tell you about Taylor. Taylor was the leadoff hitter and is a veteran on the All-Star team. She excelled at her batting position and was an All-Star team experience from last year. She led the team to victory offensively. She was a leader in the dugout and was a commanding presence at shortstop. Nice work. You can stay right there, okay? How about Briella Beckman? Are you here, Briella? Come on up. Briella owned second base. Her work ethic is unmatched. She gave her all in every at-bat, every inning, every play, every practice. She was powerful on the diamond, always at a hundred and ten percent. She also wins the worker, the hardest worker award for the season. Congratulations. Harper Crosetto, are you here? Come on up, Harper. Harper willed the team to win at every opportunity. She gave extreme effort at the plate. She triumphed on the field, executing difficult defensive feats at third base, and she truly left it all on the field. Nice work. Libby Johnson? Libby Johnson? Libby here? Oh, okay. Kirsten Wieren, are you here?
Here.
Come on up. Kirsten showed up for the state tournament with a dangerous swing, causing chaos and confusion in the field. She is a fierce, tough, and determined, never-quits type of player and all-around athlete. Nice work. Aubrey Altman. Come on up, Aubrey. Aubrey dazzled and awed at the plate with a walk-off grand slam to secure a run-rule win in game two. I have no idea what that means, but it sounds really good. This moment set off an electric team atmosphere and was a true testament to her hard work and fortitude during the season. Congratulations, Richard. Layla Goodman? Layla's ambition to win was on showcase. She led with force from the pitcher's circle, exhibiting impressive fielding accomplishments, double plays, caught fly balls, line drives, and tagged out too many runners to count.
Wow.
Ella Cooler. Ella played a dynamic first base. Her snags, reaches, flexibility, and squeeze were all on display. And anchored defensively, she worked tirelessly to improve her skill set at first base, and it paid off immensely. Chloe Washington. Chloe not here? Okay. Ella Vox. Okay, Ella. You're not gonna believe this, Ella, but I remember when you were born. Wow. Ella's enthusiasm for the sport is unmatched. She is team spirit personified. She never gives up. She refuses to be defeated or to be bested. I think that runs in the family. A remarkably fast and smart baserunner, which was crucial to the team's offensive numbers. Cameron Kucinski, not here? Okay. Well, um, I think everybody has their own certificate. We gave you those. You can take them home, and you can get someone to frame them for you, and you can put it in your bedroom, and you can look at it every night and remember what a great job you did in the state championships in 2022. Congratulations to all of you. Can we get some photos before you all sit down? Can I, can you? How do you wanna do this?
Uh, maybe if we get y'all just to.
Here's your, who will get the proclamation. So I'll tell you what, why don't, why don't you guys face, come closer together, and face over this way. We'll make two low, yeah, two rows. Yeah, the tall ones in the back. Okay, and, and face over there. Okay, great. Mark, get in. Chloe, you're gonna get in, right?
Right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
They don't have school.
They're so cute.
Cute.
It's a tiny deal.
I imagine.
You should look at it.
Oh, honey.
Three, two, one.
That was a cute.
Make sure you got a good one.
There, you got a couple behind you.
Good job, girls. See you next year.
All right, that was excellent. Next.
Larry's favorite thing.
We'll wait for them to leave for a moment. Next on our list is a presentation of the Friends of Fort Fremont for the 2022 Annual Report. Would you come forward for your report? Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Barney Forsythe. I'm the Vice President of the Friends of Fort Fremont. I'd like to introduce our president and one of our distinguished founders, Wendy Wilson. I once had a mentor tell me that if you're gonna make a presentation or a speech, absolutely make sure you never follow the Girls Eight and Under South Carolina State Champions, because it's an impossible act to follow. But I will, I'll try to do my very best. It's, uh, it's actually interesting that today we are on the agenda with the Rural and Critical Land Preservation Trust. That's important because Beaufort County purchased, uh, the Fort Fremont Preserve through the Rural, uh, um, and Critical Land Trust, and so it's nice to be in partnership with To remind you, this is the mission of the Friends of Fort Fremont. The Friends were founded in 2009, um, as a, incorporated as a not-for-profit organization after several years of work, uh, beginning in 2007, uh, with the Master Naturalist Program, and, uh, the Friends of Fort Fremont evolved out of that. I'm gonna, uh, remind you also that we are proud to be in partnership with Beaufort County. Uh, the Friends of Fort Fremont, as a nonprofit organization, are honored to partner with Beaufort County, uh, to accomplish the mission of promoting and preserving Fort Fremont, uh, here in the county. And I, I wanna emphasize that as we, uh, accomplish that mission, we try to tell the story of Fort Fremont in the context of the history of Port Royal Sound and Beaufort County in general. So, uh, the story of Fort Fremont during the Spanish-American War era is anchored into the overall story of Beaufort County. I'm gonna spend some, uh, time highlighting these points very briefly that are parts of our, uh, annual report to you. First of all, our History Center operation. We, um, we have 31 volunteers who staff the History Center. I wanna give a big shout-out to a number of volunteers who are here. If you haven't noticed, they're the ones wearing the red shirts. Uh, so, uh, and thanks to them. Uh, this is a 55% increase in volunteers over the previous year. We, uh, in 2022 staffed the center on, uh, Fridays and Saturdays and logged, uh, as you see, 1,384 volunteer hours just manning the center. I will say that year-to-date, in 2023, we've al- already logged over 1,000 hours, so we're well on track, uh, to, to go forward. Last year, we had over 4,000, uh, visitors come to the center. Uh, right now, we are just under 3,600 visitors, and that's through July, so we're gonna have lots more visitors than we did in the previous year. Uh, and you can see the other things that we did with respect to, uh, to the center as well. At the end of 2022, we considered whether to open the center and staff it on Sundays. We have done that, and so now, um, the History Center is open Fridays from 10:00 to 2:00, Saturdays from 10:00 to 4:00, and Sundays from 1:00 to 4:00. So we, uh, we're getting increased traffic as a result of being, uh, open. We have a number of volunteers, many of whom are in this room, who helped to maintain the grounds. Last year, we logged over 240 volunteer hours doing general cleanup on the, uh, grounds, removing vegetation, uh, cleaning up inside the batteries. And again, this is a, an important partnership with our friends at, uh, at Beaufort County. We developed, uh, three, uh, grants, uh, totaling, uh, $12,800 last year that were preservation grants. Uh, you can see the, uh, the sources of those grants, and we used those funds, uh, to, uh, stu- do an engineering study of the batteries with a focus on, uh, uh, safety issues. That study resulted in, uh, the county council approving, uh, the, uh, development of a way to shore up, uh, the overhang in Gun Pit 3, uh, to increase the safety for the visitor experience, and we appreciate that support, uh, and those resources to do that. We, um, we have done a lot to improve the interior of the History Center, and we have used ATAX money to do that. We began several years ago with developing a 23-minute video that tells the story of the history of Fort Fremont, and we show that video as part of the visitor experience, uh, in this History Center. Our follow-on efforts using ATAX money were to develop a self-guided tour app that appears on a smart, spark, smartphone. So when the History Center is not open, uh, visitors can still use the self-guided tour app to go around to the various stations, uh, at the center and get the whole history and the whole story of the fort as well. And our most recent additions were three interpretive panels, and you can see those panels there on the wall, which supplement the story of the history of the fort that is told through the video and through the self-guided app. So the, the center is really coming along in that regard. We've been, uh, fortunate to receive a small number of artifacts, which, um, we have on display in the center. We do not intend to become a museum. We are a History Center to interpret the history of Fort Fremont, and our most important artifact is, in fact, uh, the batteries, Battery Fornance and Battery Jessup that are there. But we have, uh, received some artifacts, and so we felt it was really important to develop a collection management plan so that we would take care of the property that we have appropriately, uh, according to national industry standards. So last year, we developed a collection management plan that guides us in making sure that we are taking care of those limited number of artifacts we have. You see on the screen, too, one is, uh, a practice round that came out of the 10-inch guns. Uh, this round came to us from, uh, the museum in downtown, uh, Beaufort, and it was fished out of the Beaufort River. It was actually a practice round that was fired from, from Fort Fremont. The other is, um, we believe, a shoe that was part of the baseball team that Fort Fremont had that was found in the attic, uh, of Cecile Dorr's house. Cecile and her, uh, husband, um, own the building, the property that was the hospital of Fort Fremont. She found this in the attic, and we think that's probably an artifact of the baseball team going forward. So, uh, we are, we're doing our best to take care of those resources that we have through a, um, a industry-standard collection management. We think it's important to get young people interested in history, and particularly in the history of Fort Fremont, and using Fort Fremont as a vehicle to get them interested in the history of Port Royal Sound in Beaufort County. Uh, we have geared our efforts in working with, uh, young people to the, um, curriculum, the state curriculum in history for 5th and 8th grades. And so you can see some of the things that we have done there in partnering with Riverview Charter School, a number of other schools. Just this past weekend, we had a Cub Scout pack that was out there and participated, uh, in a, um, map-reading compass course and, uh, toured the batteries as well. We're also developing a traveling trunk that we will take to the various schools that has, um, uh, various, sort of artifacts and facsimiles of things, uh, that represent that particular era that we can help teachers with, uh, as they teach, uh, uh, South Carolina history. We're doing a lot of community outreach. In 2022, we had an open house. We conducted an Ollie class. We've done a number of things this year to extend that. We participated in the Lands End Fourth of July Parade. We actually had a couple of members of our team that were in period costumes, uh, going forward. We've hosted a number of groups from Da La Island, uh, with, uh, special tours. Mark your calendars, November 5th, we are hosting a fall festival, uh, at the fort, and then on December 2nd, we are offering a tour of the whole, the old hospital. Cecile Dorr has kindly, uh, offered to, uh, have tour of, uh, of the old hospital through her house. We're also developing a series of lecture series, uh, where we will give lectures on various aspects of the history of that period, the Spanish-American War, uh, details about the construction of the fort, uh, and those kinds of things. Stay tuned for, for more, uh, information on that. Uh, we're active in social media, uh, both our Facebook page and our webpage are, are ways in which we get the, the word out. We are tracking, as visitors come to the center, how they find out about us, uh, and our Facebook page and our webpage are important, uh, contributions to, uh, the learning about who we are. Word of mouth and local folks who have visitors come in is also another important way in which we can get the word out. We'll continue to do that. We're also doing, uh, a number of things in marketing. You can see some examples of what we did in 2022. Uh, in 2023, we established a newsletter, which we also give out to all the visitors who come to the center. Uh, and on November 30th, we are, uh, participating in the, uh, East Coast Conference on, uh, tourism, and we'll have a number of tour group organizers come to the fort so we can, uh, tell the story of the fort and encourage folks to visit, uh, Beaufort County, and when they come to Beaufort, to come out to the fort. I wanna give a big shout-out to your Passive, Passive Parks manager, Stephanie Nagid has been a fabulous partner with us. She's a wonderful advocate for the fort, and she does a great job helping to communicate the needs and the interests of the county and working in partnership with the Friends, uh, to advance and to tell the story, uh, of the fort as well. And finally, sub- subject to your questions, I hope you all come and see us.
Excellent. Any comments from members of council?
I have one. Uh, we all here agree with your comments about Stephanie. We, we think she is absolutely terrific, and we're extremely fortunate to have her directing the Passive Parks program, so you are spot-on with that observation.
Thank you, sir. We feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I just wanna give my hats out to the Friends of the fort. Uh, I think y'all doing an excellent job there, and just continue doing what you're doing. Um, I can tell you that, um, two of my sisters, uh, visited the fort two weeks ago for the first time, um, and they were born here on, in Beaufort, on St. Helena.
Yeah.
And they visited the fort for the first time, so continue doing what you're doing so we can spread the history of the fort. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate being in your district and your support, too, and counseling. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Our final presentation is from our Rural and Critical Lands Preservation Board for their annual report, and you have a tough act to follow for the first two.
I do. This is just an exciting, good-news meeting, so I'm happy to be here and add to it. Um, I have the pleasure of speaking for the Rural and Critical Lands Board this evening and summarizing our annual report from 2022, so it's long overdue, um, but that means I kind of get to combine the successes of 2022 and the year-to-date, um, as we contemplate continued green space investments in Beaufort County. Um, so you all have, uh, the annual report in your agenda backup after tonight's presentation. It will be available at ruralandcritical.org on the, our affiliated website, um, and I'm gonna highlight a couple things for you. Um, the main thing to, to start with is the map, um, to kind of orient ourselves in terms of where we are, and so that can just stay up on the screen while I'm talking. Um, we completed two projects in 2022, um, and they're highlighted in orange on the map. Um, one is known as Village Creekside, and one is known as Labico Farms. I'm just gonna hit some high points for both of those projects. I know y'all remember them from your approval votes. Um, Village Creekside was 15 acres on St. Helena. It was a waterfront property. A family donated a concert, or, um, engaged in purchase conservation easement on that property. Um, the interesting and, and unique thing about Village Creekside is, um, that it is just adjacent to the, um, or within the commercial fishing village on St. Helena, so when you think about how the Rural and Critical Lands Program can complement other county initiatives, like ensuring that our commercial fishing villages are vibrant places for water users, um, land protection is a partner in those types of planning and zoning and cultural heritage efforts. Uh, we met with the landowners on the property several times, and, um, they told stories about how cast nets were made, handmade on their docks, and then used in Village Creek, um, for commercial and personal fishing, and it's really a remarkable property to add to the land protection that exists on St. Helena. Um, Labico Farms is in Labico, um, and that is just outside the county's urban growth boundary on the other side of the Whale Branch River. So when you think again about how land use policies and land conservation work together, you have a land use policy to encourage rural development in this area, and land conservation offers that permanent rural edge. Um, so really significant 115 acres of farmland immediately outside of the urban growth boundary. Um, 100 of that 115 acres are prime soils, um, or soils of statewide importance and, um, helps further a county goal to protect active and working farms. So in 2022, um, the county spent $877,000 on those two projects, um, but we've had several projects in the pipeline also throughout that time. Um, in total, the program has protected over 28,000 acres, um, which is something to be very proud of, uh, permanent land protection that adds to the county regional green belt and passive park opportunities. And if you open your annual report, you should see a big inset map, um, in the middle. And I, I, I know you've heard from the Green Space Committee and from Kristin at the Open Land Trust in the committee meeting, but I wanna reiterate that Beaufort has always been a leader in land conservation and that, um, but also that partnerships abound. So the land protection that occurs in the Beaufort region could not be done without partners, the county being a very significant one in the Rural and Critical Program, and the voters being a significant partner in choosing to tax themselves to protect land. Uh, and so we, we think, you know, in the conservation space, we won't can, protect all the land, but we will protect the most strategic parcels. And if you look at that map, you see properties that have linked key conservation areas like the Ace Basin, properties that have enhanced county land use policies, like our two examples from 2022, um, properties that have supported a military and natural resource economy in, um, military mission and operations, as well as agriculture and forestry, properties that have enhanced water access. Um, the Boundary Street Linear, Linear Park discussed earlier today is a great example of visual water access that is so important. that is so important to our sense of place, and properties that provide for passive recreation. Fort Fremont being a wonderful example because it's additive with a historic resource there that can tell a story that people can enjoy without damaging the natural or cultural values of the property. The report and the work that we did in 2022 also included many site visits to our properties to understand the impact of our work, and several of y'all joined us for those. I thank you for your time. We had a focus through our site visits on the Okati River, both conservation easement properties, like Three Sisters Farm that was protected very proactively in 2004, and Passive Park properties that, when open to the public, will provide for passive recreation or just being owned and used in a conservation use, provide public benefit by protecting that vulnerable watershed. We had our annual retreat down in Bluffton at the Gavin Garvey House in Oyster Factory Park, getting to use some of our Passive Park space. And your report also included a highlight on the Port Royal Sound, the watershed that really binds Beaufort County and serves to showcase the regional impact of your Rural and Critical land investment, which is, I think, you know, an important foundation as we think about the Green Space Penny building on Rural and Critical and being able to make those out-of-county investments that benefit water quality and land conservation in the Port Royal Sound at large, and the Sentinel Landscape Program you've heard me speak of, which is a partnership with the Department of Defense, the USDA, and the Department of Interior. So we do have 2023 projects of note. It's August. We've been busy since the beginning of the year. Cotton Hall, which you approved in July, is expected to close soon. We have another project for your approval coming up with a near-term closure. You've discussed Camp St. Mary's, protecting it as a Passive Park, and several more easements and fee simple purchases scattered around the county. But this is an important and new time for Rural and Critical as well because I would argue for the first time, the Rural and Critical Program is really faced with either war discussions when it comes to protecting land. Beaufort County voters chose the vehicle of the Green Space Penny sales tax, which is, I think, going to do wonderful things for Beaufort County. And the Rural and Critical Board discussed support for the Green Space Penny. But that means we have dwindling funds in the Rural and Critical balance to be complemented by the increasing funds in the Green Space balance. So we're passing the baton, so to speak. And I think the board and the staff take seriously our responsibility to steward those limited funds and make sure that the best projects are protected with the remaining dollars so that the program ends on the highest note possible. And our goal as contractors with the Open Land Trust as contractors is not to linger as a contractor, but to ensure that the best projects move forward in concert with county goals. So we thank you for that continued privilege and opportunity and look forward to ending strong. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add a big thank you to the work that's been done this year and the work that's still to be done with the remaining funds to staff and to BICOL.
Yes, absolutely. Any other comments?
Could I ask what's the fund balance?
Yes. We have 10 open projects that represent about $13 million. If all 10 of those projects close, the fund balance is around $1 million.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. We have citizen comments for items that are on the agenda. The first individual who is going to address us is Mr. Mike McShane. Mr. McShane is going to talk about green space.
Green space. That's a great segue from here in Rural and Critical Lands.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Mike McShane. For the record, I'm a resident of Charleston County at 328 East Bay Street. I think for many, I have the privilege of serving as the chairman of your Green Space Advisory Committee. And since early May, to put this in perspective, in 90 days, your committee formed and is offered to you tonight for consideration on approval, recommendation out of your land use committee recommendation for the approval of the program and the criteria with the program. As in my different roles and state-appointed roles, I can tell you 90 days is a short window of time to have the government put together a program forward. And so I gave great appreciation both to the committee members, those who are involved, but particularly to your staff. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just highlight your director of planning, Rob Merchant, the assistant director, Mark Davis, Chuck Atkinson, deputy director Stephanie from Parks was very helpful in that. And also to highlight Tom Kevaney has acted as general counsel to your Green Space Advisory Committee. I'd like to say a possibility if that could be, to have Tom's wisdom there. Again, we started in early May. You have a mid-August now program to look at consideration with a goal is to apply this program in the last quarter of this year. So if you think last November, actually go back to a year ago when the state statute was approved and signed into law, and you put a referendum together in November, and here we are in August, ready to where we could actually apply this program in the fall of this year, the last quarter. You're the first county to do this, as noted earlier. You're the first county, and I say that in my previous role as chairman of DNR and chairman of the State Bank. I appreciate the county willing to put skin in the game, and you have well demonstrated you've done so. And I compliment what you've done under the Rural and Critical Lands Program over the last decade. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Liaisoning committee reports. Any reports from any of our members? Ms. Howard?
I'd like to give a brief report with Beaufort Memorial Hospital. They met July 26th. Their board did. This coming up will be the 80th anniversary of Beaufort Memorial Hospital, and perhaps the county can support them with some kind of feature about 80 years of Beaufort Memorial Hospital. Their foundation report, they've exceeded their goal of $2 million for the past year. And the sickle cell program has been very successful in addressing and getting patients who have not been part of the program, and they are now up to 60 patients. This is very important because people who have sickle cell, if they're not in a program like this, they often end up in the emergency room. Workforce housing, they continue to work with the town of Hardyville on increase the density of a PUD there, and they hopefully can get something done in 2024 for that. They're still planning on building a learning center on Allison Road to support their people who work at the hospital on Reboot Road. And last but not least, I'll send a link. There was an excellent article about a success story of the property that we bought from TCL and a person that was an employee who won the lottery and is now renting a house there and with her and her son. And I'll send a link to that.
Excellent.
Town of Port Royal, one other thing. Town of Port Royal and city of Beaufort are having a joint meeting Thursday at 6 o'clock at the Town of Port Royal. So and I think John Robinson is going to be able to attend that, too. And any of the council members can attend it.
Excellent. Any other reports?
So the library board met in July, and given what's happened with the school district, they have revised their challenged materials policy because it will get to the libraries. And so they've revised the policy and the procedures. They gave an update on the summer reading program, just ecstatic about the number of students involved and the summer lunch program. Also, at the end of July was the County Transportation Committee. There was a little glitch in the beginning with the video, but they did a 170 triangle update. Eric did that. 278 plan is in draft. The resurfacing project is in year six. Pavement preservation project, that's rejuvenator, they gave an update. And then what was interesting is every district rep was to bring to this meeting roads that they believe need attention. So just so you all know, districts 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7 had no roads that need attention.
Bravo.
You can take that one way or another. In District 1, Hoppy Hill Circle, District 5, Cherokee Farms Road, and Rugrak Road and Salem Drive. District 11, Ibis Street, District 7, Gibbet Road, District 9, Almer Road and Almer Drive, and District 10, Wilborn Road. So that was a very interesting discussion what everybody brought forward. But I thought you would want to know, if you were 2, 3, 4, 6, or 7, you don't have any road problems.
You didn't mention 8. Because the chairman's an 8.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay. We're at the point where we're now going to do public hearings and action items. And our first action item is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. And Mr. McKellen makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the item will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. The next series of items came out of the committee that met just before here. They have been thoroughly vetted, but they are time-sensitive because of the nature of what was discussed and what needs to be done prior to the end of the year or sooner than that. That's why they're on tonight's agenda. The first one is 12A, which I said was the addition. So may I have a motion to recommend the approval of a resolution to name the Boundary Street Open Space Pocket Park located in the city of Beaufort as the first South Carolina Volunteers' Park?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bartholomew made the motion, and Mr. Reitz made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this item will be approved. Item number 13, may I have a motion for a resolution authorizing the reallocation, the reallocation of the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, funds for the planning, permitting, and construction of infrastructure necessary to relocate the operation of the Public Defuski Island Ferry Service?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Lawson, you made the motion?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Brown, you made the second? Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item number 14, I would ask a member for the approval of a resolution approving the emergency procurement of and funding for the design, permitting, and construction services necessary for the improvements to the cross-island boat landing to accommodate the Defuski Island Ferry by January 1, 2024 to comply with a court order.
Make that motion again.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. Ms. Brown makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item number 15, may I have a motion for the approval of a resolution to accept South Carolina Aeronautics Commission grant offer 23-025 for $378,044 for taxiway F strengthening and for the partial acquisition of executive air property at the Hilton Head Island Airport? Mr. Reitz, you made the motion?
Second.
And Mr. McKellen made the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 16, is an approval of an ordinance amending the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, Article 7, the Green Space Program, to establish Section 38-200 Green Space Advisory Committee Program Criteria and Application Process?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, several. Who would like to be the first one?
Mr. Cunningham jumped in.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham, you will be the first. Who would be the second? Ms. Howard will be the second. Dooley motioned and seconded by several people. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to again emphasize what Mr. McShane said, that we are at the cusp of the county and the cusp of the state on this.
We are the leading authority, yes.
We're going to write new ground.
Yes, we are. And by the way, several counties, when we were at the South Carolina Association of Counties, came to me and they may have come to other people and said, we understand what you're doing with green space.
They all wanted Mr. McShane's phone number.
Yes.
York County in particular.
Yes, yes. So we're known for doing things. Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 17, motion for a first reading of an ordinance to amend, ordinance amendment to provide for a modified millage rate for the levy of the tax for school purposes for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024, and to make appropriations for said purposes.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernick makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. For those of you who weren't here, it was stated and presented at the committee meeting that we established a mill rate for the school district as required by law, but that we could change that mill rate if necessary because of we're in the reassessment year. They have done so, and there is actually going to be a reduction in the mill rate. And all of that information is available to you. It was posted, and so this is a wonderful thing. Is there any comments from the council?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, just add to what you just said, the amount of the mill reduction.
Yes, the amount of the mill reduction was?
3.8.
3.8 mills reduction.
Reduction. Mr. Chairman, the other thing I would notice, all the things we just talked about, the last six we presented and voted on, if everyone watches the committee meeting before this, every one of these was explained and questioned and discussed.
Yes.
Because it sounds like we're just approving everything, but we've already kind of beat them to death.
Yes. That's what we do in the committees is where the heavy work is done. Here, we're just approving what the committees recommend. Any other comments? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. This is the first reading of the ordinance. There will be two more, one next week and one on the 28th to complete the full cycle because it has to be done for tax purposes before August 31st. Okay. Number 18 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to amend the Beaufort County ordinance regarding road use fee. May I have a motion and second, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment about this item? Mr. Oglet?
Very quick. I'm not going to take three minutes, I promise. Is the school district going to be part of the forensic audits that we're going to require moving forward? Obviously, this is something that taxpayers?
It has nothing to do with this one, but you can ask that question.
Well, I'm just, I'm talking about the scum, sorry. I meant the last one. And then the one before that, when you mentioned the Association of Counties, once you understand, that's a trade organization. That's a, that organization doesn't have any official standing as far as making laws. They just make recommendations. They're an association that you join.
I just want to make those two points. Anything to do with this particular item? Any other comments? We'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the council? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number?
Chairman?
Yes. Yeah, no, we had a motion and second. Yeah, that was all duly done. Item number 19, I'm going to ask a member of council to, what? 20. Oh, yes. No, 19. 19.
Yeah, it's 19.
I'm going to ask a member of council to make an amendment to this motion to postpone a public hearing and second reading of this ordinance until the council meeting of September 25, 2023.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Mr. Lawson makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification for the public, the reason behind it is to make sure that the reason that we are purchasing this land before we use $3 million worth of public funds, we can actually accomplish the goal. If we can't accomplish that goal, we want to make sure that our staff has time to talk to other departments to see if maybe this is a land that they could use before we get to that timeframe. So we're asking for a bit of an extension on the exact same item to give our staff time and Rural and Critical Lands time to discuss different options if we can't fulfill what we want to do with the land itself.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd just like to make a comment, and as we just heard, there's very limited funds in Rural and Critical.
Yes.
This will have to do, if it goes to Rural and Critical Board, I'm sure they'll take that under consideration on what?
on what's left and what we can do.
Yep, absolutely. Seeing no other comments, is there any objection to postponing this? No. Seeing no objection, this will be approved without any objections.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item number 20. Is a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance authorizing the Fripp Island Public Service District, South Carolina, to issue not to exceed $5,250,000 of general obligation bonds, subject to voter approval, providing for the publication of notice of said funding, finding, and authorization, and providing other matters related thereto. A motion and- Mr. Glover makes the motion. Mr. Bartholomew makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment?
Are these bonds, do they involve Burr Forman Law Firm? Do they have anything to these bonds? I'd like to find out what bonds Burr Forman does do, and I'd like to know if hospitality taxes are used to retire bonds. We need to look into that because there's a lot of hospitality taxes that are unaccounted for and disappeared, and we're going to need to tie that in to all your future audits. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing that, no other comments, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the council? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 21. Approval of a resolution ordering bond referenda to be held in Fripp Island Public Service District, South Carolina, on the question of issuance of not exceeding $5,250,000 of general obligation bonds of Fripp Island Public Service District, South Carolina, in three separate questions, providing for the form of ballots to be used, providing the notice of referenda, and providing for other matters thereto. May I have such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion. Mr. Bartholomew makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Mr. Glover, any comment?
Just want to make a comment that this is the public service district for Fripp Island. The citizens of Fripp Island would basically decide their destination as far as bonding-
Yes.
-funding, payments, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a public service district of Fripp Island.
Yep.
Just want to make that for the record.
Yes. Any other questions? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. That moves us to the second citizen comments. There are a few people who wish to make a comment. I will call them in the order in which they were on the comments. The first one will be Ms. Lynch. Please come forward.
Council members. My name is Lisa Lynch. I am the former Director of Wellness for Beaufort County and a registered nurse. On May 16th, I filed a complaint with the county against Mr. Eric Greenway under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 on the grounds of sexual harassment because I am a woman. It is important that you all know what happened to me and take action to prevent it from ever happening again. You should also know that I am not the only one. There are currently two other women with complaints against the county, and other women have reached out to me since I went public. I have been subjected to retaliation, and I have been terminated, which is illegal under Title VII. My life has been destroyed, and I have chosen not to remain silent. I loved my job, and I wanted to keep my job as the wellness director. As recent as 10 days ago, I asked to be reinstated to my job. This complaint has never been about money. As for my competence to do the job, I have 31 years' experience as a nurse. I have owned my own healthcare staffing company, employing hundreds of employees. I have been the vice president of a national home care company, and I sat on its board of directors. I worked as a director of nursing for two major facilities. I won Businesswoman of the Year for the York County Chamber of Commerce. I am well-qualified. My firing was unjustified. More than my firing was the reprehensible treatment I had to endure for three months leading up to my firing at the hands of those in charge. They tried their best to make me quit. However, I stood firm and took their abuse. They had to resort to firing me just one day after Mr. Greenway was put on paid administrative leave. Coincidence, I think not. I urge you, as you go into this executive session, to keep transparency in mind. Mr. Greenway should have a public hearing. If you are considering ways to make that a closed session, I ask you not to. I also ask you to consider my complaint and the bad actors that have had control over my future. If this had happened to your wife, your daughter, your sister, your mother, how would you feel? You should also know this. I will not go away. I will not remain silent, and I will not shrink away because powerful men are in the room and women who enable them. I do this for myself and for all women who are too afraid to come forward, and they have no voice. This systemic pervasive mistreatment of women in this county has to stop now. Thank you.
Mr. Hoagland.
Skip Hoagland, Waymill Harbor. David Lauderdale's excellent column, "Sloppy Government in the Packet" about the latest Beaufort County Greenway scandal should strike fear into the heart of every corrupt incompetent county employee, mayor's attorneys, and elected officials. We all know what corruption is. It's insider dealings, it's bribery, quid pro quo, nepotism, pay-to-play, kickbacks, and more. Now is the time, during this wholly self-inflicted county disgrace, to speak up on this issue. It has severely damaged our community and caused embarrassment to honest councilmen and employees alike. We must understand dishonest acts by county officials further degrades the system. It's a curse to society and totally against democracy. Corruption continues to flourish here. Weak law enforcement and lack of accountability have created an environment where this behavior has gone unpunished. And systematic issues such as lack of transparency, four-way compliance, fraudulent internal audits, fraudulent budgets that both only show the numbers the insiders like Greenway, Solka, Gruber, Orlando, and others want you to see has created multiple opportunities for these immoral, craven people to abuse their power. We must focus on robust and force laws, regulations, and full financial transparency. Remember, we all have the power, and it starts with ourselves. Let us not support corruption, the greatest evil in our society, and let's remove it. People are silent in such situations, but being silent is not acceptable. Raising our voices towards exposing wrongdoing is a first step to fighting corruption. Combating corruption is challenging, but measures can be taken. First, approving the court system and the institutions responsible for ensuring accountability. And we can do that by this council hiring an outside forensic auditor, preferably somebody out of state without any ties to this state or local insiders, to conduct a thorough forensic audit of the entire Beaufort County and all those who have received tens of millions with zero oversight for the last 50 years. This includes the school district, our treasurer, the town of Hilton Head and Bluffton, and the nonprofit Hilton Head, Bluffton, and Beaufort Chambers. Burr Forman Law Firm and the bonds and millions of hospitality and aid tax funds have disappeared. We need to get to ground zero so we know how deep the financial violations and the shenanigans are. Let's fix this sloppy government. I don't want to be here. I don't want to come and criticize any of y'all because I respect that you're doing a community service, and you're trying to do the best you can. But it's not going to work if we don't all make this happen. We got to work together. You got to do it. It's right, you got to do it. Transparency, that's it. End of story.
Ms. Greeley.
Yes, I'd like to- I'm Lynn Greeley. Would like to give my three minutes to Skip Hoagland.
No.
I will do that for you because she fears-
No.
A lot of people fear speaking. Yes, I'm going to speak her three minutes.
No, you're not.
Oh, yes, I am. Yes, I am.
I will recess right now.
We can do it with a P.O.A. or not.
We are in recess right now.
How dare you? How dare you disrespect the people you serve?
You have been told numerous times-
I don't care. You are absolutely-
You have to follow-
She has every right to let me speak for her three minutes.
No.
A lot of people in this county have been sued for defamation, for speaking up, and for you to do that is outrageous. I'd ask everybody to sit.
We have two other individuals who would like to speak. We have two other individuals who would like to speak. Ms. Scott, can you come forward? Ms. Scott, can you come forward?
Girl softball team notwithstanding, I feel like you all are my friends. Girl softball team notwithstanding, I feel like you all are my friends. But I also feel like it's important for me to tell you that oftentimes citizens know But I also feel like it's important for me to tell you that oftentimes citizens know what is best for their communities than administrators and developers. what is best for their communities than administrators and developers. We have the greater good in mind. We have the greater good in mind. We don't have personal agendas. We don't have personal agendas. We're working for all the people in our communities. We're working for all the people in our communities. July 20th, I had finally had it with the previous county administrator, and I sent July 20th, I had finally had it with the previous county administrator, and I sent a letter to Fitz News and the Post and Courier outlining what I believe to be his incredible a letter to Fitz News and the Post and Courier outlining what I believe to be his incredible collusion with developers, preferably Mr. Tropiano. collusion with developers, preferably Mr. Tropiano. They had a lot of meetings before we knew anything about it. They had a lot of meetings before we knew anything about it. And I think the straw that broke the camel's back for me was when he was playing golf And I think the straw that broke the camel's back for me was when he was playing golf on Fri-- with his beautiful friend, Elvio, and here the county is being faced with lawsuits. on Fri-- with his beautiful friend, Elvio, and here the county is being faced with lawsuits. We hired a man apparently nobody checked his background. We hired a man apparently nobody checked his background. He had been called before the Ethics Commission of South Carolina prior to coming here. He had been called before the Ethics Commission of South Carolina prior to coming here. He'd been involved in some kind of shenanigans in York County with Jim and Tammy Fay Baker, He'd been involved in some kind of shenanigans in York County with Jim and Tammy Fay Baker, and yet he becomes our county administrator. and yet he becomes our county administrator. I have never been more disappointed in a person's incompetence or ethics than I have I have never been more disappointed in a person's incompetence or ethics than I have been-- well, I'll take that back. been-- well, I'll take that back. There is one who's ahead of him. There is one who's ahead of him. However, the kind of hubris he displayed and his lack of fiduciary duty to people However, the kind of hubris he displayed and his lack of fiduciary duty to people who are paying him over $200,000 a year to represent them, and he undermines our comprehensive who are paying him over $200,000 a year to represent them, and he undermines our comprehensive plan and our cultural protection overlay. plan and our cultural protection overlay. That's just the tip of the iceberg. That's just the tip of the iceberg. That was my complaint. That was my complaint. Then I find out, I pick up the newspaper and I find out that our sheriff and our county Then I find out, I pick up the newspaper and I find out that our sheriff and our county prosecutor have said this man has gone into some other criminal realm which is going prosecutor have said this man has gone into some other criminal realm which is going to result in his termination. to result in his termination. I am grateful he is gone. I am grateful he is gone. I will also look forward to our lawsuits because I want to speak there because I believe I will also look forward to our lawsuits because I want to speak there because I believe this man led that developer down a path that told him he could do what he wanted with Pine this man led that developer down a path that told him he could do what he wanted with Pine Island, and that was not the case. Island, and that was not the case. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate every one of you. I appreciate every one of you.
And our final speaker, would you come forward? And our final speaker, would you come forward?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Marilyn Hemingway, and I am CEO and founding president of the Galaguiche My name is Marilyn Hemingway, and I am CEO and founding president of the Galaguiche Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce. And I am here this evening to introduce the Galaguiche Chamber of Commerce, but also And I am here this evening to introduce the Galaguiche Chamber of Commerce, but also to talk about economic development and the Galaguiche Seafood Trail. to talk about economic development and the Galaguiche Seafood Trail. I'm assuming everyone has a copy of this, and I have some for the audience also if I'm assuming everyone has a copy of this, and I have some for the audience also if anyone wants any. anyone wants any. I'm not going to get deeply into page one and page two because I think we-- who are I'm not going to get deeply into page one and page two because I think we-- who are the Galaguiche, who I stand in the heart of Galaguiche, so I think we know that. the Galaguiche, who I stand in the heart of Galaguiche, so I think we know that. But I do want to point out some things. But I do want to point out some things. When I founded this Galaguiche Chamber of Commerce five years ago, I did not want a When I founded this Galaguiche Chamber of Commerce five years ago, I did not want a seat at the table. seat at the table. I wanted to build a table. I wanted to build a table. I believe that we can build many tables in a house that will create economic development I believe that we can build many tables in a house that will create economic development for our community. for our community. "If you don't have a seat at the table, if you're not building a new table, you are "If you don't have a seat at the table, if you're not building a new table, you are on the menu," is a quote that is actually heard quite often. on the menu," is a quote that is actually heard quite often. And quite frankly, I was tired of being on the menu. And quite frankly, I was tired of being on the menu. All right? All right? So what does that mean? So what does that mean? Economic development through our culture. Economic development through our culture. And I do want to highlight who are the Galaguiche. And I do want to highlight who are the Galaguiche. In particular, I want to highlight our ancestors were brought here, extracted from Africa In particular, I want to highlight our ancestors were brought here, extracted from Africa because of their knowledge of how to control the water and manage the land to grow the because of their knowledge of how to control the water and manage the land to grow the indigo rice, sugarcane, sea island cotton, and take bounty from the sea. indigo rice, sugarcane, sea island cotton, and take bounty from the sea. In the work that we are doing, we want to take that culture and we want to create economic In the work that we are doing, we want to take that culture and we want to create economic development. development. We are starting with organizing local ecosystems. We are starting with organizing local ecosystems. And we say organizing because they're already here. And we say organizing because they're already here. There are many items and many actions already taking place that are here, but our job as There are many items and many actions already taking place that are here, but our job as a chamber is to organize those local ecosystems. a chamber is to organize those local ecosystems. Why? Why? Because in 2021, the Galaguiche Cultural Heritage Corridor Commission released a market Because in 2021, the Galaguiche Cultural Heritage Corridor Commission released a market research study that said Galaguiche tourism potential is $34 billion a year. research study that said Galaguiche tourism potential is $34 billion a year. $34 billion a year is a game changer. $34 billion a year is a game changer. How are we going to be part of that? How are we going to be part of that? We are creating the Galaguiche Seafood Trail, which is part of the infrastructure which We are creating the Galaguiche Seafood Trail, which is part of the infrastructure which will take potential to reality. will take potential to reality. We are partnering with the Galaguiche Nation, Galaguiche Fishing Association, South Carolina We are partnering with the Galaguiche Nation, Galaguiche Fishing Association, South Carolina Sea Grant Consortium, Coastal Carolina University, and Wekoja Foundation. Sea Grant Consortium, Coastal Carolina University, and Wekoja Foundation. The Galaguiche Seafood Trail is funded through a grant from NOAA, so six-figure grant from The Galaguiche Seafood Trail is funded through a grant from NOAA, so six-figure grant from NOAA that has allowed us to create Galaguiche University, which provides entrepreneurship NOAA that has allowed us to create Galaguiche University, which provides entrepreneurship courses. courses. We are also doing special events. We are also doing special events. Right now, we just launched last week, Bring Harriet Home in Georgetown. Right now, we just launched last week, Bring Harriet Home in Georgetown. For three months, a sculpture will be visiting Georgetown. For three months, a sculpture will be visiting Georgetown. And we are also working on year number five of the Galaguiche Environmental and Energy And we are also working on year number five of the Galaguiche Environmental and Energy Conference. Conference. All of this time, we're talking about the Galaguiche Seafood Trail, which will be an All of this time, we're talking about the Galaguiche Seafood Trail, which will be an economic development engine for the entire coast of South Carolina. economic development engine for the entire coast of South Carolina. So we, as part of the grant, it is for us to come to your meetings and introduce ourselves, So we, as part of the grant, it is for us to come to your meetings and introduce ourselves, what we're doing, and also the future for the Galaguiche community. what we're doing, and also the future for the Galaguiche community. Thank you for your time, and just wanted to show you some of the things that we're Thank you for your time, and just wanted to show you some of the things that we're working on, merchandise, t-shirts, and books, journals that are for sale on our stores, working on, merchandise, t-shirts, and books, journals that are for sale on our stores, and this will be also happening as we move forward. and this will be also happening as we move forward. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Very good. Very good. All right. All right. I would like a motion and second for executive session items pursuant to South Carolina Code I would like a motion and second for executive session items pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-470 A2 and A1. 30-470 A2 and A1. We're going to go into executive session for legal advice on matters covered by attorney-client We're going to go into executive session for legal advice on matters covered by attorney-client privilege, Eric Greenway's request for a public hearing to receive legal advice on privilege, Eric Greenway's request for a public hearing to receive legal advice on matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, retention of an outside law firm to conduct matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, retention of an outside law firm to conduct reviews and audits as previously reviewed, and a discussion of employment of a person reviews and audits as previously reviewed, and a discussion of employment of a person regulated by county counsel Mr. John Robinson. regulated by county counsel Mr. John Robinson. May I have such a motion? May I have such a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Ms. Brown makes the second. Ms. Brown makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Dooley motioned and seconded. Any questions? Any questions? Okay? Okay? We are going to be in executive session. We are going to be in executive session. There may, underlying may, be matters rising out of executive session. There may, underlying may, be matters rising out of executive session. There may underlying may be matters rising out of executive session.[11.00][11.00](Applause)
There being no further actions to be taken by county council, the meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Gerasch.
Thank you.
I'd like you to see everyone. Um...